Morning, everybody.
Morning.
All right, it's November the 12th, 2024. The day after Veterans Day, and all the veterans thank y'all for your service. It's very much appreciated. We have two. As a matter of fact, Commissioner Carbow, Commissioner Arthur up here with us. At regular meeting, Liberty County Commissioners Court, it's about 9:09? 9:07? And we have business for the court. Commissioner Whitmire will be here shortly. He's stuck in traffic, but we can go ahead and get started. And hopefully by the time he gets here, we'll be moving into the regular agenda. The first things first, let's all rise. Lee, if you would, lead us in the pledges and I'll get the invocation.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Before we get started this morning, I would ask that we all give a moment of silence for our Commissioner Leon Wilson that recently passed away and well, just give it just a few moments. Thank you. Y'all pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you give us in life each and every day, Lord. We pray that we live up to your expectations. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your grace and your mercy. Lord, we thank you for all your wonderful blessings. And Lord, that we hope that you will stay with us and lead us in the right directions and help us to make, well, best decisions for everyone in mind. Lord, we thank you for the time that we had Leon with us. And we know you have him now. Lord, a lot of changes are on the horizon, not just locally, but in the nation. And we ask that you will watch over everyone, help us to keep cool heads, help us to have a good outlook, help us to reach out, touch and love one another to where we all can get along and look for the best, the best decisions for everyone, not just locally, but nationwide. Lord, we thank you for the rain we have recently. We sure needed it and we sure do appreciate it, Lord. Thank you so much. We thank you for the beautiful day that we have outside. We hope that you will walk through the rest of this month with us through Thanksgiving as we move on into the Advent season of Christmas, Lord. Just be with us, guide us and direct us. And please forgive us where we fall short. We ask these things in thy name and Jesus' most precious name. Amen. I would like to ask the court's permission and Catherine, just to make sure that would it be okay to give Leon's nameplate to his family? Is there anything that we need to do to go through that process?
Just for transparency purposes, we could declare it surplus or salvage and then make that transfer.
Okay. So we can put that on the next court?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So we'll make sure we do it right.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, let's move on to notices and proclamations. Do you think we don't have any notices or proclamations today? Hallelujah. We have any public comment? Didn't see anybody come in this morning to offer any public comment or request for such. We'll move on to the declaration of conflicts of interest. Anyone have any on the Commissioners Court that sees a reason why they should declare conflict? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Has everyone had the opportunity to look over the consent agenda? And if so, well, it's court's pleasure. Any additions, Kim?
I do have. And we have a payoff for Gail Laird in the jail, at the jail. And the total amount of unused comp is $1,954.14.
And now they're picking you.
I'll repeat that one. And Gail Laird is a former employee at the jail. We have unused comp payoff for her at $1,954.14. Andrea Tiscareno also at the jail, $2,117.56. And a payoff for Courtney Vila at the jail, $602.88.
Dwayne, you have anything? Nothing? Okay. What say the court?
Motion to approve consent agenda with the addition.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce to accept the consent agenda with the additions noted. And Lee, you got those additions correct. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I will be voting now since Commissioner Wilson's not here and Commissioner Whitmire is not here yet. Okay. That motion does carry. Moving on to regular agenda, this is from me. Consider and approve the revision of the order designating days on which Liberty County Commissioners Court will convene in a regular term in 2025. In November of 2025, the second Tuesday falls on November 11th, which is a holiday. Therefore, for the month of November 2025, Commissioners Court will be moved to the third and fourth Tuesday. And for the month of December 2025, court will be the second and third Tuesday to allow for the Christmas holidays. So if y'all haven't looked at your calendars to see where that incident would give a little bit of a burden as far as holiday offer, well, Thanksgiving and such and Christmas as well. Any questions?
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, two, from Mr. Gott. Consider and approve transferring unused ARPA funds from the courtroom technology project to the Northwest Annex Project to cover additional costs. Obligated funds will increase by $3,362.22 from a, well, from a 4.7 million to a 4.7, well, 703, $362.22 number. Everybody follow that? Okay. Greg makes a motion, second from Bruce. Further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, from Ms. Chambers over in the county clerk's office. Consider and approve the county clerk fee schedule for 2025. These fees are effective January 1st, 2025. Lee, you want to, anything you want to add?
Sheriff Rader and I had a difference on one of the fees, which I think is the publication sheriff's fee. So that's the big change is it went from 75, which I had to the 100, which he had on his, which you approved earlier. So it's just really a correction so that we are matching up in our fee schedules.
Catherine, you have anything on there to add?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, four, from Ms. Chambers. Consider and approve the payment of $1,200 to Tyler Technologies to prepare a special filing notice in the Eagle Recording System for Special Districts to be paid out of the county clerk's records management funds.
Okay, this is a little bit.
I'm gonna let you elaborate on this for Lee, okay?
A little bit. We are, as we're growing, we're getting a lot of special districts. I'm talking about MUDs, MMDs, the PIDs, the WCIDs, all of these special districts. We get a lot of requests for information to reserve MUD numbers, et cetera, et cetera. And it's getting harder and harder to keep up with. What we are proposing to do is to put it into Eagle as part of our notice system so that every time we get something on a special district, MUD, MMD, PID, et cetera, that this paperwork will go into the system. And for instance, this last week I got a search request from a MUD, wanted to know if anyone filed anything against their, you know, we get a lot of stuff on these MUDs and we need a way for people to be able to look them up without having to call me and go, do you know? Because my memory is not as good as it used to be. So what we're going to do is we're going to build the system and I'm probably going to come back and ask you guys to formally set up a numbering system for the, a nomenclature, a naming and numbering system for these special districts so that we have some uniformity across the county and how they're named and how they're put in. But what this does is it'll create a database so that we can put in all of that information and it'll be available for people to look up in the future.
Well, as we're getting more and more of them.
Yeah, a lot.
Yeah.
I think we're on seven, we'd have all 17.
MUDs.
MUDs claimed through 17 for Liberty County MUD District. And that doesn't count the River Ranches and other special ones. It's getting very, very complicated.
Yeah.
So what they're going to do is they're going to, like I said, create a database. From now on, when we get paperwork in, it will go into the database and it'll be a point where people can search for and find information on our whole variety of special districts. And I'm talking, all of them will be in there.
Okay.
Drainage, all of water, all of them will be in there when we finish with it.
Is it over?
No.
Yep.
You're here just in time.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Is there any further discussion? Well, well, number four, regular agenda. Give David a second to get caught up here.
Glad to see you could make it.
Well, thank you, Bruce. I appreciate that.
Yeah. That old road kind of, kind of bad.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Yeah. But just think about it, it's gonna be over pretty soon. Yeah.
True. Okay.
Can we have a motion and a second? Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, five, from me, that's the, consider and approve me as a delegate and Greg Arthur as the alternate representative to the Houston County Area Council, HGAC Board of Directors. And I've been serving there for, it seems to be 10 years.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Motion from Bruce, second from, David, I'm gonna give you that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry, gentlemen. Number eight, six, from Mr. Dennis. You awake back there, brother? Just checking on you. Okay. Consider and approve payment of $1,800 to Texas Association of Counties for the annual cybersecurity awareness training at a rate of $5 per user for the approximately 360 users.
Is there any renewing for cybersecurity training? Everybody still happy to take and pass?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. I take it. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Thank you. Okay. That motion does carry. Eight, seven, from Mr. Gott. Consider and approve a $6,250 donation each to Casa and Bridge Haven from the Child Crime Family Violence Fund, the special revenue fund, which was created by the legislature is funded by court costs. Pretty self-explanatory, Dwayne, anything you want to add to it?
No, it's made in the legislature to designate for certain purposes.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Got a motion from David, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, eight, from Mr. Gott. Consider and approve budgeted $15,000 annual donation to Montgomery County Crime Stoppers. It's pretty, just a regular donation we've been doing for a while.
I move to approve that.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Not going too fast, Emily. Okay. Number eight, nine, from Ms. Soliday over in permits and inspections. Consider and approve the closure of GLO Grant 20-065-095-C264. The grant completion report is attached in the packet along with a request for Judge Knight to sign the report. So Melinda, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, sir. It's all pretty straightforward.
Okay. I like the closure part.
Yes, I do, too.
Finally.
It's breaking words.
Yes, ma'am. Motion Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 10, from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve the preliminary plat for Incentive Estates, Section 8. Attached in the packet for review is a letter from LJA Engineering approving the preliminary plat and preliminary storm drainage plan as submitted. So the letter is intact?
Yes.
Everything's been reviewed? We got an approval from them? Okay?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 11, from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve the payment of $43,877.42 to Vertosoft for the permitting department's software for the period of October 1st through October 31st of 2025. This is the second year of the five-year contract, number DIRTSO-4227. So we're just continuing on that software's.
Yes, sir. We do approve the contract, but I did not put the amount on there at that time. So I'm just, for transparency, for reasons I wouldn't have wanted to.
Thank you. We appreciate the transparency part. What say the court?
Take a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's see, Melinda. Number eight, 12. Consider and approve the recommendation of award for construction of the City of Harden Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation 2024 to King Solution Services LLC. Attached in the packet is a letter of recommendation from LJA Engineering and the bid tabulation worksheet. You have anything you want to elaborate a little further? It's pretty explanatory.
It's pretty self-explanatory. I didn't, could not find a decent way to add it to the agenda, so I printed it for Commissioners to actually see.
Where does this lead us at this time? Where are we sitting at this time now?
On this one?
Yes, ma'am.
I hadn't gotten the contract in at times. You should put that on here as well, but it looks like this one is going to get ready and start moving.
Does that make the commitment solid, Dwayne, as far as the ARPA funds are concerned? Okay. About December 31st, yeah. Okay. All right. All right. Want to say the court? Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Number eight, 13, from Ms. McMillan over in Injin Healthcare. Consider and approve updated commissary medical charge sheet effective January 1st, 2025. Good morning. Morning, Judge. No, no, we're good. Morning, Mr. Elmore? Yeah. Okay, what we got? A moment. On your, Penny?
Okay. This, oh, go on, Judge. This is our annual review of our jail commissary charges in comparison to our surrounding counties. So when we looked at it, we ended up increasing five of the charges and we added three. So we're trying to make sure we're in step with our surrounding county jails. We just look at it every year at this time and make sure that we're charging the same for commissaries as McMillan, Chambers, and Sanderson and the other counties.
So free toes are free toes, right? Okay. Gotcha.
So if court approves, it changes in the add-ons. It will go into effect January 1st, 2025. And that way it gives them time to modify our amendments by the changes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 14, from Mr. C over in Ferguson Department. Consider and approve the extension of the current term contract for Fuel ITB number 23-04 through November 2025, through November 25th, 2025, with Synergy Petroleum LLC exercising the second of two renewal options. Harold, you got anything you want to add to that?
No, they're local company responsible, but they think it was a really good job. It's our last renewal. We'll revisit it next year, next November.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, DRC is a new contractor. We've been dealing with Crowder Gulf, but. Huh?
That was on the fuel.
Yeah, this is fuel. Yeah. We're gonna get through pretty quick, Bruce.
Make a motion to approve. I'm sorry, I'm running behind.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 15, from Mr. C. Consider and approve payment of invoice number H019533 from Raba Kinster in the amount of $5,739.04 for construction materials, testing services for the Northwest Annex. Pretty self-explanatory there.
Yeah, he always has to have a third party to test the material.
Right. Yeah.
This is maybe the first or second.
I think the second. Yeah. Motion from Greg, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 16, from Mr. C. Consider and approve recommendation to award RFP number 25-01 Disaster Debris Removals Services. So we have the sheet now. Bruce, you have any questions?
No.
The two commissioners, the one and two, were on the committee. They were discussing.
No, DRC was overwhelmingly.
Yep.
Where we've been dealing with Crowder Gulf and I didn't have no complaints about them, but their package, DRC's package was, I was impressed with their owning their own equipment, not having a bunch of subcontractors come in.
Mm-hmm.
So overall, yeah, they're, I think they scored them pretty close to saying.
Yeah. They did, yeah.
Well, they're always out of another state, but they usually have local, local Houston area. And also, if you would designate, if they are willing to, Crowder Gulf is an alternative. They're never using alternative, you never know.
Yeah.
Yeah, were they, they agreed to, were they both agreeing that it would be an alternative?
Well.
No.
Well, that's probably after, when they want to.
If they want to do it, okay.
Make a motion to award primary DRC and Crowder Gulf as the alternative.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Is there any problem with that alternative designation, Catherine? Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 17, from Mr. Post and Ms. McCarty over in the county attorney's office. Consider and approve amended resolution for donation and road use settlement and release agreement between Liberty County and Natural Gas Pipeline Company of America LLC for damages to County Road 109. That's over in your neck of the woods, Bruce.
Yeah.
And reimbursement for previous repairs made to White's Bio Bridge. Total amount of $400,074.32 to be paid to Liberty County. Catherine?
So if you recall, a few courts ago, I had put on a couple of resolutions for donations by Natural Gas Pipeline, two Roden Bridge Precinct, one, one for work done on County Road 109, and also the reimbursement for previous repairs to White's Bio Bridge a few years ago. However, I believe that the legal team at Kinder Morgan had some additions to make to that document and they have forwarded what's on today's agenda back to us. However, Commissioner Karbowski and I have spoken and we believe, we have a meeting with them tomorrow and we believe that it would be in the best interest of the county for us to table this today. Because ultimately what this is, is a donation. And the law states that all the court has to do when a party wants to donate to the county is to accept, formally accept that donation by a vote. So hopefully we can, we can discuss this with Kinder Morgan and bring this back for a final acceptance.
What say the court?
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion is carried to table and we'll bring it back up. You think at the next court later?
Absolutely. If not sooner.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Number eight, 18, from Mr. Post and Ms. McCarty over the county attorney's office. Consider and approve agreement regarding subdivision rules and regulations for development and creation of a public improvement development district by and between Sterling Traditions LLC and Liberty County, Texas. Okay. PIT, here we go with another acronym, but that's okay.
Yes.
You want to give us a little bit of insight on this one?
Certainly. I've been working closely with the people behind Sterling Traditions, which is a new development in Liberty County. And they have proposed, or they'd like to create a PIT, a Public Improvement District in Liberty County. And the agreement that is contained in your packet details the creation of that PIT. And the team is here today and they are here to answer any questions that you may have. I have gone over this agreement in great detail with the team with Sterling Traditions. It's pretty straightforward as far as the creation of PIDs go. We did create a caveat for public services, emergency services for, within the collection of those fees. Now, today is just, would be just the development agreement to create the PIT down the line. There will be additional documents that will need to be approved as far as the assessment of fees, the collection of those fees, that kind of thing. All right? But Mr. Benson, who I've been working closely with, is here to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Gentlemen, if y'all would come on up and, to help Lee out, identify yourselves so she can put it in the record, okay? And be sure and turn on the little button to where it turns green. There you go. Okay?
Will Benson with Sterling Traditions LLC, PO Box 3, Creek City. Benson with Sterling Traditions LLC, PO Box 3, Creek City, Texas, 775. Hayden Rice with LJA Engineering, address 1904 West Grand Park, Katie, Texas.
All right, let's, let's hear what you got.
So, Your Honor, we were before you at the August Court with our general land plan, and this is sort of the next iteration of the steps, which starts to set the groundwork for construction standards within our subdivision. So I want to highlight a few points. One is that this is a curb and gutter street of, you know, traditional quality, like you might see around the west side of Houston. And so that's part of what we have in this agreement. We're also contemplating PIDs for parks. So this isn't a pit over the entire water super drainage and those sorts of things. This is literally just the beautification package. And so as you guys are aware, a pit is an assessment levy of the people that are within that district, and this is for the beautification of the subdivision that our residents will inherit. So we felt like it would be nice to put together an entire package of that. So we have actually visited with Sheriff Rader. We talked a little bit about enforcement and those sorts of measures. We've injected into that at 1,000 residents that we would contribute to officers in our subdivision, something that's pretty standard in Fulton County and Pershing County and other counties. We've also, we visited with Richard Brown. In the forthcoming measures that we have, he had some ideas with us about how the collection and those sorts of things would work, so we've put that into our team as well. We visited with the ESD District.
Mm-hmm.
The ESD District really likes the east-west access point as well as Sheriff Rader. And we talked also with Sheriff Rader about in our community center, designating a small spot for, sort of a touchdown spot for emergency service personnel, a parking spot, a bathroom, a small office space, that sort of things. We could work out a very, you know, nominal grade for leasing space like that, if you will, but those are all things that we've kind of contemplated. So it has been very well thought out, Catherine's been great to work with and appreciate your time and consideration today.
Okay. You have any questions? All right, want to say to the court?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming up and visiting with us.
Looking forward to working with y'all.
And Judge, if I may, I'd like to add that Sterling, the Sterling Traditions team, their engineering firm is also LJA, and I know that that will be helpful going forward in that development and making sure that they're compliant with any restrictions that the county does have.
Good deal. Thank you. All right. Number eight, nineteen, and eight, twenty, we'll, we'll be moving into executive session on those. I would ask that we skip over those for the moment and move on down to eight, twenty-one, and then we can complete our court session. Eight, twenty-one is from Commissioner Whitmire. Consider and approve a prepayment of $27,551.17 for a 2015 utility box trailer from Porter Truck Sales LP for RMB Precinct 3.
That's it?
That's it, okay. Want to say to the court?
What you gonna use this far?
During the storms, you know, we needed, a lot of stuff was donated and, you know, in San Antonio and different places, and we didn't have a way to go get it, so this is why we, you know, it'll benefit all of Liberty County.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg. Further discussion? You got that money paper there?
Yes, sir.
Just checking.
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays, that motion carries. Number eight, nineteen, number twenty, I'd ask that we, for the executive session at this time, I need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. David?
Someone go get me some.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mighty fine. Back in regular session now, it's 10:00 AM. The items discussed for number nineteen and number twenty on the agenda. Number nineteen, from Ms. McCarty and Mr. Poston over in the county attorney's office. Consider and approve proposed First Amendment to Access Agreement involving the proposed donated land tract to be donated by Liberty County Solar Project LLC, Liberty County for its road project and the need for front end land suitability testing. That's pretty self-explanatory. Catherine, you have anything you want to add to it?
It, it just extends our current access agreement till April of 2025 to allow LJA to conduct land suitability testing before accepting any type of donation of this land pursuant to, to the agreement we have in place.
Right.
Make a motion to approve proposed First Amendment.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty was also discussed executive session, we're back in regular session, of course, and it was discuss and take potential acts regarding continued negotiations with Trinity River Solar One LLC for a proposed tax abatement or other economic development agreement. That's pretty self-explanatory. Catherine, you have anything you want to add?
No, the court just needs to make a determination as to what they want to do.
Okay, want to say to the court?
Make a motion to discontinue negotiations with Trinity River Solar.
Second.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nays, so the first was a yes, the second was a no, Lee.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
That motion from Bruce, second from David to adjourn. All in.